I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is February 21st, 2023. It is 7:00 PM and we are in the Town Hall Meeting Room. On the agenda tonight, we have the approval of minutes for March 21st, 2023 Sightwalk, January 28th, 2023 Sightwalk, February 7th, 2023 Meeting. We have a space for public comment. And then we have two public hearings. One for American Iron and Metal, a conditional, major conditional use renewal. And item number two is Dubois Automobile Salvage, a conditional use renewal permit. We then have two pending applications. American Iron and Metal, Major Conditional Use Renewal and Dubois Automobile Salvage, Conditional Use Renewal. And the third one, Timber Frames by R.A. Kraus, a Site Plan Review. And we have a new application from JJWZ LLC, a Site Plan Review. When we finish up with that, we'll have a report from the Town Planner and then we'll all go home. And I'll start with a roll call at the far end.
Marty Kane.
Susan Sennett.
Paul Green.
James Lowry.
Tom McGinn.
Turn your mic on.
Susan Roth.
And Rich Canon, I'm the Chair. I need an approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Any comments, discussions? Hearing none. Those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Moving right along to the approval of the minutes of January 21st, 2023, the Vinegar Hill Sightwalk. Anybody that was there have any comments to make?
I will make just a note, as it was discussed down here earlier. If you are not at the Sightwalk, please recuse yourself and let me know who you are so that I can.
I was not.
Okay. Neither was I. Okay.
We're on the Vinegar Hill?
Vinegar Hill on the 21st.
Yeah. I'll just point out that every, it was nothing, no surprises, so.
Okay, we need a motion.
I move that we accept them as written.
Second, motion by Susan Sennett, seconded by Paul Green. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have two abstentions?
Three.
Tom, Paul, Sammy, Marty. So there's three abstentions.
No, I was present.
Yes. Susan Roth. Susan Roth, myself and Marty were not at the Sightwalk. January 28th, 2023. American Iron and Metal Sightwalk.
I'll be recused from that one.
Accused.
And I'm recused.
I was there and it was very straightforward, no surprises. Oh, sorry. It was very straightforward, no surprises. Didn't take us more than 15 minutes. We walked the property. And there was nothing remarkable. So.
One thing I would ask is Drew from Haley Ward, do you know the individual's name that was there? Evidently, we didn't get it.
It was Drew over three.
You?
Yeah.
Okay. What was your last name?
Okay, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to accept the Sightwalk minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Free abstentions, you got those, boss. And the next one is the minutes of the Planning Board from two weeks ago, February 7th, 2023. Any comments? I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green to accept Susan Sennett's seconds. Any, no discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? It is unanimous. And look at that, we were all here. Okay, moving right along, public comment. This is that time of the evening, if you have a comment concerning an item that is not on the agenda, you can discuss it with us and let us know what it is and we'll proceed from there. Does, although I must admit, from looking at it, everybody that's here has an item that's on the agenda. So we will move right along to the, to the public hearings. The first public hearing is for American Iron and Metal. It is 7:06. Major Conditional Use Renewal Application for Renewal of an Expired Conditional Use Permit for 43,000 square foot Solid Waste Disposal Facility and Metal Recycling Yard Located on a 22.9 acre parcel located at 2244 Portland Road Tax Map 12 Lot 9 in the BI District. American Iron and Metal is the owner and the applicant and Drew Olahowski, P.E. of Haley Ward Incorporated is the applicant's agent. Does anybody from the public have any comments to make concerning this mode, this agenda? Hearing none, I will call the public hearing closed at 7:07. And we will open Dubois Auto Salvage Conditional Use Renewal, A Proposed Application to Renew a Conditional Use Permit To Continue Operation of an Existing 85,000 Square Foot Automobile Salvage Area On a 3.6 acre site located at 2 Irving Road Tax Map 19 Lot 6 in the R4 District. Cynthia Dubois, Trustee of the Randrick Trust is the property owner and applicant, Along with Randy and Ricky Dubois and Saul Fetter. Anybody from the public have any comments on this particular item? Hearing none at 7:08, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to pending applications. The first application is American Iron and Metal, a Major Conditional Use Renewal. Application for Renewal of an Expired Conditional Use Permit For a 43,000 square foot Solid Waste Disposal Facility and Metal Recycling Yard Located on a 22.9 acre parcel located at 2244 Portland Road Tax Map 12 Lot 9 in the BI District. American Iron and Metal is the owner and the applicant. Andrew Olahowski, P.E. of Haley Ward Incorporated is the applicant's agent. Comments from the board? If there are no comments.
Noted, I mean, nothing looked out of order at the Sightwalk, so nothing from my standpoint.
Everything was clean and orderly.
What is your pleasure? We need a motion to move on.
I move that we.
Oh, hang on just for a second.
They, did they submit the findings that we asked for?
So, yes, I have in the packet. They provided us with the testing results.
Okay.
And it was another piece of that package, right here. Piece of that package as well, which was the analytical report, Which were the two pieces that were missing from the first time and we now have them in the file, so we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept.
Motion made by Paul Green, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Susan Roth. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, findings of fact, Conditional Use Permit for American Iron and Metal LP Solid Waste Facility, 2244 Portland Road. On December 12th, 2019, the Planning Board issued a three-year major conditional use permit To American Iron and Metal LP to continue operation of an existing 43,000 square foot Solid Waste Recycling Facility on a 22.9 acre site located at 2244 Portland Road Tax Map 12 Lot 9 In the BI District. Contingent upon the provision of assurances that AIM management had resources sufficient To close out and restore the existing solid waste site in the event of closure. The applicant's major conditional use permit expired on December 12th, 2022. The applicant submitted a renewal application on December 22nd, 2022 For a major conditional use application from American Iron and Metal LP To resume operation of an existing 43,000 plus or minus square foot Solid Waste Recycling Facility on a 22.9 acre site located at 2244 Portland Road Tax Map 12 Lot 9 in the BI District. Contingent upon the provision of assurances that AIM management had resources sufficient To close out and restore the existing solid waste site in the event of closure. On January 28th, 2023, the Arundel Planning Board conducted and advertised public Sightwalk on the premises. On February 21st, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project. Findings of fact, number one, the applicant and owner of the property is American Iron and Metal LP. The property is located at 2244 Portland Road Tax Map 12 Lot 9 in the BI District. The property has been used for the past 20 years as a solid waste recycling facility specializing In the collection, reduction, and exporting of recycled metals. Number four, as depicted on the application and accompanying maps prepared by previously, Prepared by previous at, prepared by previously prepared, no, prepared by CES And now represented by Haley Ward and dated December 22nd, 2022, the applicant Proposes to re-permit this recycling facility to process the same types of metal materials That the facility has historically processed. The applicant has previously installed a 10 by 20 scale house, A second vehicle weighing scale, a RadCom detection unit installed 10 parking spaces, Reduce the driveway entrance to 42 feet in width and install the 29-foot landscape aisle Between Route 1 and the customer parking area. Number five. All other recycling areas and collection points are to remain as shown on the existing conditions Map prepared by CES dated May 13th, 2019. Number six, the driveway entrance maintains a site distance in excess of 600 feet to the north And south along Route 1 in conformance with the minimum distances for a 50 mile per hour road As specified in Section 5.21.1 of the Land Use Ordinance. The applicant has both a current and active solid waste permit and stormwater permit From the Main Department of Environmental Protection. All peak runoffs will be detained onsite and all runoffs collected in stormwater treatment ponds. Number eight, water services provided by the Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port Wells Water District From the Route 1 mains and onsite septic is provided by an onsite septic system. Number nine, no new lighting, no new site lighting is proposed. Number 10, the Planning Board has determined that existing vegetation with limits of cutting As depicted on the existing conditions, the plant set will be sufficient to meet all landscaping And parking lot buffering standards of the BI District to the side and rear property boundaries. Number 11, the applicant has submitted proof of liability insurance in the amount of $1 million Per occurrence and $2 million annually for accidental occurrences. Number 12, the applicant has submitted a revised closure plan and an itemized budget For contaminant testing and theoretical soil removal and remediation at such time That the facility closes. The applicant has proposed a surety amount of $265,000 Conformance with conditional use criteria. After doing, after due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board Has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 9.2.9 Of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 9.2.9.1, that the use is compatible with and similar to general categories of uses In the neighboring properties. The uses and sizes of the structure are similar in scale and scope to the surrounding properties And other uses in the BI District. We need the motion on each one.
Move to approve as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve 9.291. Tom McGinn made the motion, Paul Green seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development Of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan permits solid waste facilities For the BI District as conditional uses and therefore the use is in conformance With the 2016 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Move by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.3, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access To and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The existing operation will not generate a significant increase in trip generation. The applicant's driveway site distances exceed the minimum standards of Section 5.21.1 And the applicant has received an MDOT driveway opening permit for the proposed activity.
So moved.
Second.
Nope, gotta, gotta hit you.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Susan Sennett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.4, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. Existing onsite septic will be provided onsite and water is provided to the site By Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port Wells Water District. The proposed use will not increase the demands for water or septic flow on the property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Susan Sennett, seconded by Marty Kane to approve. Any discussion?
I just have one little comment, it says septic will be provided. Shouldn't that say is provided? Because they're not planning on.
Sure, we can modify that just to say it is, yeah.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
That the physical, I think 9.7H5?
There's another type, yeah.
It's, it's.
Should be 9.2.9.5.
Okay, 9.2.9.5. That there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use That will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise. The nature of the business does generate noise from crushing and unloading materials. However, the board finds that the proposed sound levels are not unreasonable For the use or the district and meet sound level standards mandated by Land Use Ordinance Section 5.11.1 at the property line. Odor, this use will not generate any odor issues. Vibration or smoke, no vibration or smoke issues are generated onsite. Glare, the applicant is not proposing to add any additional lighting onsite.
So moved.
Second.
Who moved that? Tom? Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, 9.2.9.6, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, Drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The applicant proposes no site modifications that would impact the existing slope And drainage conditions on the site.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Sennett. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. The applicant has provided adequate documentation that a hazard mitigation and containment provisions Are installed and operational at the facility to minimize nuisances generated by the proposed use.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Tom?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.8, that all other pertinent, that all other requirements and applicable provisions Of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards are met. The applicant has demonstrated financial and technical capacity to operate and close the facility And therefore is in compliance with Section 93387C of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance In the design of the proposed facilities.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board approves The Conditional Use Application of American Iron and Metal LP To operate a solid waste facility as herein presented contingent upon the following. Number one, any change from the approved plans shall require submission of the revised plans to the board. Number two, the applicant shall submit a surety to the Town Planner In the amount of $265,000 to cover closure costs. Number three, any test results of pond water or sediment Will be provided to the Town Planner along with the facility accepting the material. Number four, this conditional use permit will expire on February 21st, 2026. Approved by the Arundel Planning Board on February 21st, 2023.
And so moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, congratulations, gentlemen. Next on the agenda. Dubois Auto Salvage Conditional Use Renewal. A proposal, a proposed application to renew a conditional use permit To continue operation on an existing 85,000 square foot automobile salvage area On a 3.6 acre site located at 2 Irving Road Tax Map 19 Lot 6 in the R4 District. Cynthia Dubois, Trustee of the Randrick Trust is the property owner and applicant Along with Randy and Ricky Dubois and Saul Fetter. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Move to accept.
Second.
I'm sorry, Susan, I should have said ladies and gentlemen. Okay, motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Findings of fact, Conditional Use Application for Randrick Trust Automobile Salvage Yard. On December 12th, 2022, the Arundel Planning Board did receive a conditional use permit Application from Randrick Trust to relicence an existing 85,000 square foot automobile salvage yard On a 3.6 acre site located at 2 Irving Road Tax Map 19 Lot 6 in the R4 District. On January 14th, 2023, the Planning Board conducted a public Sightwalk. On February 21st, 2023, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing on said application. The Arundel Planning Board reviewed and given due consideration of the applicant's application Has arrived at the following facts and conclusions. Findings of fact, the land, number one, the landowner and applicant with right title and interest Is Cynthia Dubois, Trustee for Randrick Trust. Number two, the property is located at 2 Irving Road and is identified As a Arundel Assessor's Tax Map 19 Lot 6. Number three, the parcel consists of 3.6 acres of grassland Currently containing salvage vehicles of various types and is contained within a 98 acre parcel. Number four, the applicant proposes to continue utilizing the designated area For storage of salvage commercial vehicles and automobiles. Number five, the applicant has general plans of the salvage area entitled Automobile Salvage Relicensing Plan NF Dubois 2 Irving Road as prepared by Albert Frick Associates Dated April 9th, 2010 with revisions through June 17th of 2010. Number six, the existing facility is not located over sand and gravel aquifer Or aquifer recharge area as mapped by the main geological survey. Number seven, neither the designated facility nor any abandoned or salvaged vehicle Is located within the 100-year flood plain as mapped by FEMA. Nor is the facility located within 300 feet of a church, school, public park, cemetery, Recreational, or neighboring dwelling. Number eight, the designated facility has been configured to be situated More than 300 feet from the upland edge of Brimstone Brook and other natural water courses on the property. Conformance with the conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined The application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 9.2.9 Of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 9.2.9.1, the use is compatible with and similar to the general category Of uses of neighboring properties in that the use is not permitted in the R4 District But is a pre-existing non-conforming use and cannot be expanded beyond the existing boundaries.
So moved.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discuss, oh, by Jamie, I'm sorry, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9.2.9.2, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan And the anticipated future development of the neighborhood In that the use is in conflict with the comprehensive plan And the anticipated development of the neighborhood as agricultural and low-density residential zone. The use is illegally non-conforming and therefore has standing as an existing use.
Aye.
Gotta hit the mic, Marty.
Head is on.
Okay.
A second.
Motion made by Marty Kane, seconded by Tom, right? By Paul? By Tom, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9.2.9.3, there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access To and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the proposed use In that the site already has access via a gravel road from Dubois Livestock Complex An adequate site distance and access to Irving Brimstone Road.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Sennett, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.4, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use In that, in that water supply is not essential to the operation of the facility. Waste liquids are drained from incoming vehicles and incinerated onsite. The draining operation is conducted in the barn on impervious surfaces.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Sennett. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.5, there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use That will adversely affect neighboring properties. All vehicular fluids shall be drained from all vehicles before storage within the salvage yard. Wastewater petroleums will be burned onsite and waste coolers will be recycled In accordance with main state regulations.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9.2.9.6, the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slopes, soils, Drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use In that the physical characteristics of the site are suitable for the use, excuse me. The underlying impervious soils prevent percolation of petroleum fluids into the groundwater And proposed improvements and erosion control measures shall preserve the integrity of the existing lands.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9.2.9.7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. The facility will not present public or private nuisances to the adjoining property owners Or the neighborhood. The site will not be visible from the street and most adjoining property owners.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Susan Sennett, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9.2.9.8, that the proposed use conforms to all other requirements and applicable provisions Of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent shore and or zoning standards. The applicant has designed the facility in compliance with all other performance standards And technical requirements of the land use ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Based on the above. Based on the above findings, the Arundel Planning Board approves the application of Randrick Trust to continue operation of the, the existing automobile salvage facility contingent upon the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall maintain all state of mind permits in full force and shall maintain compliance with all state regulations and standards at all times. Number two, no salvage parts or vehicle shall be stored outside of the designated area shown on the record maps, nor shall any materials be located closer than 300 feet to any stream, intermittent stream, well, or body of water. No salvage material shall be stored within the shoreline zones located on the property. Number three, the conditional use permit shall expire on February 27th, 2026. Failure to renew this conditional use permit prior to expiration date shall result in the loss of legal non-conforming status of the salvage operation. Approved by the Arundel Planning Board on February 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by, was that Paul or Jamie? That was Tom. He keeps playing ventriloquist and throwing his voice.
I have a question. Why would this conditional use expire on the 27th, February 27th of 2026? And the previous one was tonight's meeting, February 21st.
Because of the dates that they had originally expired.
Okay. That's ours. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I was talking to Marty. I missed the motion. On is, was the motion to include, was it the conditions of approval?
Yes.
So can, who, who is the motion in a second?
I believe it was Susan.
Susan.
Susan and Tom. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
Was there anything that came from the discussion or you all set from what you guys were talking about?
There's just a discrepancy and probably a typo in the acreage issue that Marty was questioning. Nothing that would.
Nothing that hold it from back from, but I mean, I, I would just try and do my math and see if my math was right or wrong and we didn't term that yet. Thank you.
So there could be a typo, but that's the only thing. It would be just adjusting the typo versus the, the content.
Yeah, the contents is fine.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. The next item up for agenda is timber frames by R.A. Kraus, Site Land Review. A proposal to create a five-acre lot from an existing 22-acre lot to locate a timber frame manufacturing business. The property is located on Portland Road on Tax Map 12, Lot 6 in the BI Zone. Richard Kraus is the owner applicant and Paul Gadboy, PE, is the applicant's agent. But that's okay.
Mr. Chair. I may, before we get started, I just want to point out that I, I have had, I was what, a contractor with subcontractor? Yeah, for, for many years. Hasn't been for 10 years or more, yeah.
It's been 13 years.
Been that long? So I, I, I have no vested interest either way, except that he succeeds, but that would be for any business in town.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that disclosure. From my point of view, I don't think there's a conflict of interest.
Good.
Yeah.
I don't think there is.
Not after 13 years.
I don't know how many years I've known him.
That'd be my dad. He's was on the beach in Florida, so.
But overall, that's put him non-declutter. No need to, but it's there.
Take it away, Paul. Tell us all about this great project.
Okay, well, we met here sometime in, not in this project, or yes, we did, sometime in September. Actually. For a sketch plan review, um, in your packet, you'll find a purchase sales agreement for Masal Virgin, which is DCD Properties for the crosses to purchase the five-acre piece of property. We do, we met on September 6th, 2022 for a sketch plan on the project. Um, project is proposed to construct a 6,525 square foot building along with 24,300 square feet of impervious area of a total impervious area of 30,870 square feet for a lot coverage of 14.2%. Lot coverage in that zone is allowed to be 70%, so we're way under lot coverage allowed for the project. Project is served by public water, but we're gonna have a well because of the cost of bringing public water to the site. And tends to drill a well to supply the water for the property. Property is designed for truck, trail truck to actually drive around the building. So you come in, drive around the building and leave, along with six parking spaces, the applicant gives us more than necessary for the project. Uh, the project's not in a flood zone. We did give the Army Corps Wetland Field Permit, and I think that was a part of your packet. Uh, we did receive the construction entrance permit and we recorded that permit at the New York County Registered Deeds as required by MDOT because the project actually needed waivers. Um, the project doesn't meet, the site distance required for that area. However, DOT guaranteed us a waiver with the requirement that we have a right turn in and a right turn out lane only at that project. We had 540 square feet or 500, I'm sorry, 500 feet roughly a site distance. They, they just said we need 840 because it's our not Terryo Street. Um, so we didn't have that, so they decided that they would give us the entrance permit only if they did right turn in, right turn out. So what that means is if a tractor-trail truck is proceeding south and they want to enter the project, they're gonna have to actually turn on Technology Drive, which is a public road. Go around the cul-de-sac, come back on Route 1, and then enter the project. If a tractor-trail truck's leaving the site and wants to go north, they're gonna have to go wants to go south, they're gonna have to actually probably drive to and in the believe is industry.
Most likely, they'll probably just go to the interstate from there.
They might, but if they want to go south, and that's gonna be their only option, is to drive in a bit of it, go through industrial park loop, come back out. Of course, if it's your owners, they'll probably drive down to Old Post, go in, head to Old Post Road to their residence. So. Correct.
We didn't have like the visible right of like sight line. There's like a slight hill right before the, uh, the Eagles Club there, and it just doesn't quite give you the visible from the, the north coming traffic.
If you're in a tractor trailer, you're sitting up high enough, you, you can see over the hill.
See over it, but it's.
Unfortunately, I height is for a small car, you know, when you're looking back and not for a truck-trail. But you're right, a tractor-trail truck will have a higher site distance, but any event, that was the only way we can get a MDOT permit.
They make the rules.
They make the rules.
It's really not, not that big of a, you know, hindrance on the overall project.
Yep. Um, there was a run-up pool found on the project. It did meet the ground pool status of significance. Our paperwork was filed with the DEP, NIFNW, and they recorded as a not significant run-up pool. What that means is according to the Army Corps, or the only criteria, criteria they have is we can't fill the pool. So in this case, you can see, and says, not having any direct impact to the pool, is having impact to the wetland. But we have an Army Corps permit to allow us to have that wetland crossing. Then install a culvert to have continuation for the wetlands. A larger require larger culvert, so gravel bottom, so the critters can kind of walk inside the culvert and make it feel like Um, other things, we do have to file stormwater permit for the project, it's just a PBR. DEP requires us to file that 14 days prior to the beginning of construction. I did include it in your packet. I have not recorded it. DEP will wait till we know, actually know construction dates, and but it has to be filed 14 days before. Oh, then I did a little, I did a stormwater this, uh, calculations for the project. I don't believe in my letter states that um, I don't believe it would cause a downstream drainage. 25-year storm event. However, this site flows to two large associated wetlands. The first wetland is 2.63 acres, which is located on Masal's other land that he owns, DCD Properties. From that wetland, it goes through twin 24-inch culvert onto another 1.4 acre wetland, which is again located on DCD Properties on the other side of Technology Drive, and then from there it goes to 24-inch culvert under a driveway to of the land. I, my calculations, and it's really almost a no-brainer. You really go out there and you look at the site. The little amount of wetland, it was storm wetland. And my if you look at the calculations, um, work for the 25-year event, fifth in that first two the wetland, should I plug the culvert, it's going in the Technology Drive, it would raise the water level by one-tenth of a foot, or approximately an inch. Again, um, and you see my conclusion, I say I certify that increasing the volume and rate will not aggravate the conditions downstream or upstream for this project. I believe the board has the opportunity to allow that. Um, I did the calculations because I can't just say it's a no-brainer, go out there, take a look at it. But it really is a no-brainer, you go out there and take a look at it. This project is not gonna impact the downstream wetlands. So again, um, just wanted to say we did get driveway entrance permit. Um, that was recorded, it's in Book 19172, and you have that in your packet. That's required to be recorded because you did a variance. Any variance obtained by MDOT need to be recorded, the registry. Here, so the Department, again, the Army Corps of Engineers said that they approved the wetland field application. No further action is necessary from the Corps for this project. And I included all the paperwork that I included with that. Again, DEP, I have a letter from DEP saying that pools are not significant based on Chris Copey's uh, skill visit and counting of the egg masses in the pools during the appropriate season. That also was filed by I, I Inland Fish and Wildlife, and they recorded those two pools on their website and basically saying not significant. Again, Copy Environmental did the run-up pool studies. Uh, reviewed the wetlands that were on the site that were previously flagged by another outfit, so he reviewed them and uh, stated that the wetlands were flagged accurately. Need to soil test bit, did a show all back where this episode is gonna go for the site. And basically that was, uh, the, the limiting factor was groundwater 11 inches. Bedrock within 24 inches. Uh, the Maine Department of Agriculture basically said they're, according to their, their information is currently, uh, no rare or botanical features associated with the project. Maine Historic Preservation Commission came back with a finding saying that this party has no historic properties to be affected at a development. And it's probably not located in a flood zone and it's not located over significant sand and gravel aquifer. And I did do a slight, uh, did provide some lighting cut sheets for the project, when I mean, always near uh, the property lines exceeding, and we won't be exceeding 1.5-foot candles anyway, the property line. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board might have on the project.
How far down from the driveway is this fire hydrant?
Fire, how far down from the driveway?
Yeah, right, right there off Route 1. I can't figure out how far it is. Yep, that's the one. Okay.
I sent a letter to the fire chief. He basically has been pretty busy, but I did, was able to nail him down at the Belanger staff meeting that we had. I spoke with him personally, and he said he had no problems with the project. But I didn't get anything in writing from him.
Okay. He needs to put that in writing and send it to us.
I'll try to get, I sent him several emails.
Well, we, we may need to seek a substitute. I believe the chief is gonna be unavailable for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, he didn't respond to all my emails, phone calls. So to get it in writing, may have to ask Lee J to get it from him.
Well, I would, I'd say, if, if, if he tells Reynold to write it.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll, I'll have a conversation with the manager about that, um, and see who's gonna be responsible for addressing those issues in the short term.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that'll go. No, no, I, I know, it's, it's just getting him to get stuff out isn't always the easiest thing.
I get it.
But and, and we do have time since tonight is simply a completeness and setting dates um, before any action is taken, so I will, I will work on that.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Paul, what is the, what's the use of the property to the north?
Vacant.
Recently purchased.
It's vacant right now. It used to be the old Eagles?
Yeah, it was the old Eagles, and my dad explained the vac.
That's been torn down.
Yeah, it was, it's not a vacant, it's a big empty pit. It was for sale probably three months ago, but it's recently been purchased and the site taken down. By all assumptions, they're gonna put a family down.
No, the reason I asked was because I saw your arborvitae planted near the property line. I was just curious if it was, if it was buffering something.
I kind of looked at the ordinance and because, um,
Yeah.
Putting, I figured it was, it was a good, it's nice burn there, so I figured it'd be a good thing to do, but do we need it? No, there's nobody there right now, but I mean, it's kind of cheap. It's kind of cheap money, I think, along that area of the property.
I move that we mark this as complete, as a complete application.
I'll second that.
Motion, motion made by Susan Sinnett, seconded by Tom McGinn to deem the application complete. Any discussion?
Were there any waivers that were requested that we need to review?
I don't, I don't think so.
They had not requested any waivers of the application.
I did ask for, for kind of my writing, but I'm thinking like the illumination on the building furniture, the light fixtures, I'm asking for that waiver. Which I probably never.
I didn't remember seeing that in the application.
Yeah, it says all picture monitor ability, no remote. It says drawings of all it says portion of the walls to be illuminated, illumination levels and the aiming points, or not, they're all fixed lights. So they want, I guess you do, you're ready, you want the illumination on the wall. But we're so far back, I'm asking that for waiver. It's not like we're gonna be shining like we're 20 feet from Route 1 and a lot of illumination.
Let me ask, what, what type of lights you planning on having?
They're all shielded.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be more just like Shield of Scotses for like the aesthetic when you drive up at night just to because this building is something that we want to have clients drive up to be like
Look good.
Yeah, we want them to, you know, and it's kind of how we have it set up right now. You know, our office is in the original barn, where Tom used to work out of like old office, all shingled, but big glass door in the front, people drive up, like, you know, we want that effect.
So that was my bad. It's on the very bottom of the second page, I believe, of the checklist. So I would suggest that if you are in agreement that you do include that waiver as part of the emotion. Susan would need to agree with that.
DJ, but the building isn't built yet. And they haven't even come before the board for the building. Right?
Correct. This is part of the lighting submission as part of the application. So they need to request the waiver now so that they'll know that they have it. Excuse me, if you grant it, that they don't have to address that issue as part of the application.
Okay.
So I wonder, um, not to prevent this from being deemed complete, I think I still think it is, but if maybe just a note saying you just have a couple of, um, sliding, sliding, yeah, just where you think it would be. It, what, what we want to be sure is that there's no, like, uh, big It what, what we want to be sure that there's no like, uh, big pole lamps and.
I'm showing the lights in the building. I'm showing the lights.
Cut sheets in the pack.
Okay, though that, then you're covered. All right.
Oh, you know, I have, sorry. I have them shown in the building. Right. Asking for a waiver for the illumination on the building itself. Because I don't like calc like that. I have to hire a fighting engineer to figure that out. We're so far from the road.
So it's going to be, we're not going to leave them off. Somebody leaves.
Yeah. So it, there'd be no lights on if you're not there and just you, you, you could have a couple if you want, but it wouldn't be a problem, but okay.
Paul, question, if you got to do your own well, if it becomes salty, are you going to turn, put the, uh, street water in? I think it's a pretty big, uh, pretty high thing. Can we just take the salt water out through a purification or is that? No, no, I'm just saying that you, because you're doing a dig well. If in case it's not.
Potable.
Portable.
Yeah, if it's not potable, we'll probably go through somebody like air and water quality to do the testing and see what mitigation strategies they come up with.
Okay, because I didn't know if he would just, because you got the water line right there on that side of just coming in.
I think it's more along the lines of my dad's ethos of how he's kind of always, uh,
Wants to be like off the grid.
Yeah, he's just, we're not going to be off the grid, but he wants to be very self-sufficient in what we do out there. Um, I think down the road, you know, we'd like to propose solar on the building, stuff like that.
Yeah, I've just, just asking for a question. I mean.
We run into that issue. It's something we deal with in residential construction all the time. Um, you know, we'd probably just bring in another sort of air and water quality consultant to help mitigate it.
Okay.
So I alter my, I, I still deem this as application is complete with a waiver regarding the, um, the lighting is downlighting and building lighting as fixtures are affixed to the building. Um, that's my current movement.
And I second.
Who made this second? Tom? Motion by Susan Senate seconded by Tom to deem the application complete uh, with a waiver of the lighting requirements at the bottom of the second page of the questionnaire.
Page twenty.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Page twenty, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, page twenty. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. We now need to schedule the sidewalk. I can't, I think we should do it. I think we should do it on Thursday person.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Thursday is unavailable. Bring your guys or first team.
Unfortunately, we can't do it Thursday. I know you'd like this too, but we have, we have a time requirement so that we can post it.
I was out today and I heard it had a tick on me. Like, come on, really? Can't wait till
That ranks up there with the brown tailed moths that they were talking about on the news.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Maple syrup running.
What's a good day for, for you guys?
Depend on your weather because we got weather coming in. You're going to be in anywhere from twelve inches of snow or better walking through.
You will, you will be.
Okay, there you go. Oh, my God. Well.
I won't be there.
It has to be a Saturday just before the board meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, because sun sets at five twenty-five.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what it would be like on the seventh of March in terms of at what point it gets dark, but it'd probably be dark.
So why don't we do it on a Saturday morning? We've been pretty good with those nine, nine thirty.
What are you thinking on the fourth? I can't make it Saturday. At this time of year, I can't make a meeting.
I was just throwing it out.
Yeah, and you know, we only, we only need.
The only situation is I'm away third through the eleventh. He's away the third to the eleventh and my dad's with thirty.
Okay.
You want to do it after the eleven?
If possible, um.
We could do the eighteenth.
That works for me.
That works for it.
Daylight savings time will change by then because it changed March the twelfth.
Anything except the Saturday, I can't hear before I walk before I come. So nine thirty on the eighteenth? Yeah, I moved, we do, we meet on the eighteenth at nine thirty in the morning.
Is there a second? Motion by Susan Roth seconded by Paul Green to have a sidewalk on March eighteenth at nine thirty A M.
That works for me. Now can we schedule a public hearing or is that too soon to ask that request?
The public, after, after that, the public hearing will probably be on the twenty-first.
That's perfect. You, so that works.
Yeah, and.
And you have a meeting on the twenty-first, right?
We have a meeting on the twenty-first, so I'll let Ann know to, to schedule that up.
Thank you very much.
Is it the twenty-first? Yeah, it's the twenty-first. Okay.
Yep.
Right, thank you.
All, any discussion on the sidewalk? All those in favor? There you go. It's unanimous. Okay, on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is J J W Z L L C site plan review. A proposal to import two thousand cubic yards of fill onto his property located at thirty log cabin road tax map thirty-nine. Eight in the T C zone. J J W Z L L C is the owner applicant represented by Robert Zuck and Paul Gadboy. He is the applicant's agent. So I'm, I'm assuming that this is the first of more than one times that you'll be coming in front of us on this property. Because he, well, he's going to fill the property. Is he going to build anything on it?
Not right now.
But at some point.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, but it'll be, we have no plans for anything right now.
Oh, okay. I, I thought I made the, the assumption that because you were building it in, you wanted to be able to level it out so you could.
He wants to level it out just for landscaping purposes for the neighbors.
Okay.
There is a building on the site.
There's a building on site. It's not, it's not.
Yeah, that's, that's the old forefathers, right? This is the forefathers that's on site, the bill, no? I'm in, I'm in the wrong spot.
Thirty, thirty-two log.
Okay.
So as Linda just stated that Bob wants to currently uh, bring this fill into the property to get prepared for a building in the future, um, primarily that he wants to, it's kind of a low area. He wants to grade it all out to him and his neighbor and and bringing the fill and let it settle prior to going to construct in the future. So it's a good time for him to take on the project. Uh, the project is located, um, in the townhouse corner district, so has uh, many uses associated with that of a property. Um, I think his future intention is to build a garage um, to store equipment and materials um, in the future, but he'll come back with that application. Obviously, I'm sure he'll do that. So, um, right now uh, the property has not received an army corps wetland fill permit. I did receive an email from, um, the person that's going to be handling the project today, although I did submit you know, quite a while ago, which is okay, but, um, her name is Natalie Bingham. She's going to be dealing with the permit process for the project. Haven't received yet. I have no reason to think that we can hide. Um, we did get a letter just today from the main historic preservation commission stating that they had no problems with any historic features associated with the project. Um, still, I did notify the five Indian tribes as required by the army corps, uh, permit process for the wetland fill. Um, so I did, uh, um, oh, I got the wrong. Sorry. I'm not, I got Richard Kraus in here. Uh, I did Roger Passerow supply an email. I don't know if I submitted that in your packet. I probably didn't. I got it on February sixth. Uh, Roger said after reviewing the project, you didn't see any conflicts that this project would have for the town of Arundo. Existing access should be adequate for the purpose and cause no burden on surrounding properties as, uh, well, uh, the driveway is still been marked avenue road, which is on the M D O T jurisdiction, but still should not require any additional permits. And if you have any concerns, please advise. So I don't think that was in your packet. That will be in your next packet of the email that I got from Roger dated February sixth. Probably right after I submitted the packet.
Paul, just make sure we get that for the.
I will. Yep, absolutely. Um, I didn't hear from the fire chief. I'm not so sure I even sent it up to the fire chief in this particular case because we don't have a building proposed, so I suppose I can, but we're not proposing buildings, so I would think it was necessary.
I would think at this point, just for the fill, I don't really think we need anything from the fire chief.
That's kind of why I didn't notify him. Okay, just wanted to make sure. I got that Roger, obviously, you know, public works to, to, to look into the project. Um,
I, I found, I found the spot that had me confused about you're putting up a building. It's, it's in the, uh, U S Army Corps of Engineers. You, you want to construct the thirty-five hundred square foot building.
Yeah, and eventually that's.
Yeah, okay.
This is kind of same scenario that happened through the underage crossroad. This probably. Combined with that into huge, I just mean a wetland associated with the outside only. I looked at all the weather associated with the property and the weather associated with the history on all those one point four acres. Um, five days. Eight or ages was raised water with. So Chris, we're all dealing with the vegetation for the.
The, the, the only thing I, I see other than my confusion, you're asking for a waiver on the stormwater drainage calculations. Is, is this going to be, it's not going to be paved? So it's not, so there's no impervious surface?
But it does say about the gas communication. Say increase the bottom of the way of. It's not meaning several things. The wire that is just showing you the calculations and I'm writing in on my report that there will be, you know, the rate increase, the rate of running off.
So I, I, I wouldn't consider that a waiver. Um, he has, he's, he's submitted the stormwater plan. I think more importantly is when they come back in the future for a building on the property, which is going to create impervious surface. That's when we will need to take a harder look at any stormwater issues. But for the time being, with just putting fill on the site, it's really not an impact to the property.
That was my thought on it and, and you've given us the information, so why would we want to give you a waiver on something you've already given us? Yeah, but we'll, we'll have to address it a little more. A little more vigorously than, than right now.
Somebody's at the door. I think. Do you try to come in or out? Yeah, ten, um.
Are we missing anything to determine completeness on this?
No, I don't believe you are. I think that, um, it's ready for you to find complete and to, um, determine whether or not you want to do a sidewalk and, um, set a date for the public hearing.
Okay. To the ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure on completeness?
I will most move that we deem this complete.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tom McGinn seconded by Susan Roth to, to determine the application to be complete. Any discussion?
I don't think we need a sidewalk if they're just spilling.
Well, no, let's, let's deal with the motion that's on hand. Is the application complete? Yes or no? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Now we'll go to the sidewalk and I, I believe Marty is correct.
I agree.
For just spreading some, some bill on this site, I don't believe it requires a sidewalk. And the ordinance gives us the wherewithal to say, you know, the ordinance says we may have a sidewalk. In this case, I think having a sidewalk would be a waste of time.
Yeah. And so in possible preparation of that, um, where your motion would be to set a date for the public hearing, I had discussed that earlier with Ian and we can have this on the March seventh, your next meeting for the public hearing and potential action.
Somebody make a motion.
Should we discuss the recommendations first?
And no, um, I would hold off on that until you're ready to actually approve whatever you're going to approve.
Yeah, it, it would be questions from the public. I just, but yeah. You'll, you'll be back on the twenty-first though. So you'll be around on the twenty-first. Okay, let's. Let's, let's, let's schedule the, the public hearing for the twenty-first. Okay.
Can I have a motion on that?
I need a motion on it.
Okay, I, I saw moves on it.
Motion by Tom, is there a second on the? Seconded by Paul Green to have a public hearing on the twenty-first of March.
We're going to vote.
We're going to vote. We're going to vote on it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And now we'll look to the, now is the last order of business. We will look to the town planner and say to him, Mr. Planner, Mr. And say to him, Mr. Planner, Mr. Planner, what do you have for us? Anything?
Uh, not much, um, it still continues to be very busy. Um, I can tell you that I'm, I'm hoping for the seventh to have. Um. Modifications to the A D U ordinance in front of you to address the L D two thousand three. Um, requirements, um, I have had. I have had conversation with the town attorney, um, about, um. What, what the town needs to do for L D two thousand three? And, um, well, I think we're both pretty much on the same page that. We're really needing to just address the A D U ordinance and and clean it up a little bit, but other than that, um. There's nothing else that you're gonna need to, um, look at. At least right now. That being said, there are a number of different, um, bills in the legislature. To, um, make changes to the law.
Of course there are.
Where, where they go, we're not sure. They range anywhere from, um, putting it off for a year. Putting it off for two years, um, and modifying the bill to only require. Um, municipalities with greater than ten thousand person population to have to address this. So we don't know where, um, it's gonna end up, but, um, things could change. That being said, I have had conversation with the state D E C D staff. Um, I actually did a presentation on this to some other communities, joint communities with that staff. And there is concurrence that, um, the legislation or the law actually at this point. Does not have any teeth in it for the state to come down in the town if the, um. Ordinance amendments are not in place by July one. Um, I wouldn't stand up and recommend that you do that, um, if we don't have to. Really, it would come down to a developer or some individual wanting to. Challenge the municipality in court. Um, the state is not going to have any skin in that game. So.
Also, isn't most of these applicable to having public water?
Um, no. One, uh, no, I, I'm getting a look, and so I want to finish the statement. The, um, affordable housing development requirement. Requires that it be in a growth area or that it be with a consistent comprehensive plan. Or have public sewer and or some sort of public, um, sewer. Um. Sewer. Yeah, um, so this, this community does not qualify under that. The, um, two to four unit requirement. Um, we are required wherever, um. Homes are allowed per zoning. To have, to allow in the future two independent homes on the same parcel. Um, which our ordinances do have under the, um, two-family allowances in the ordinance, so we're okay there. Um, but there are some stipulations under the A D U requirement. Under the A D U requirement, there is nothing regarding, um, public water, public sewer. Um, or anything as such, wherever residential development is allowed, you must allow one A D U. Um, and so that's really the only piece of the puzzle we need to change, because there are things in within that. That address things like you cannot, can no longer requiring additional parking spaces. Um, for A D Us, so if you say in the ordinance that you allow, um. To power, you require two parking spaces per unit, um, you cannot require any parking spaces for the A D U. Unless the applicant chooses to put them in themselves, basically. And there are some other modifications. I'll wait until I can get that in front of you, um, for our discussions, but. It's not a lot of changes. It's just some tweaking that we need to do to the A D U law. Yes.
So until the law is, or the ordinances are codified. So does the existing ordinances that we have on the books. Uh, they are, uh, the ordinances of record.
Yes.
And.
And, and that's why we would take a chance on not adopting something if the law stands for July one. Requirements.
And, um, just a quick question, A D Us still have to be attached to the original dwelling? No, they can be separate.
Side attached or, um, freestanding.
And do they have to use the same septic and well, or can they have their own septic and well?
Same, um, same septic and well, um, will need to be sized accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, that's all I have, um. I don't know if you noticed, um, a little bit of a tweak that we've done for you folks on the agendas. Um, but we're now in in red, we're now adding what the possible action. For that application would be for you so that we know where we are in the process and what. The action, um, for that evening might be on an application. Um, just a little thing that other communities have been using and, um, I really like it. I think it makes a lot of sense and it just keeps. Everybody on task. Yes. Yes.
Do we have to sign things?
Yes, you do, um.
I thought you had to make tweaks to.
Um, on the signature page, though, I don't have to, so. Um, well, no, I can make some tweaks. Uh, and I'll just send them out tomorrow and have, you can do an electronic signature.
Yeah, get it, get it to me and I'll send it out.
We'll do that. Yep, now it's just clean. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, yes, did, yes, um, did you get that back in your packet again for tonight?
No.
Okay, um. Why don't we wait till the next meeting? I mean, it's not an urgent thing. And we'll, um, I'll make sure Ann gets us copies again, so it's on the agenda and.
Okay.
Not, not vital at this point. Yes, thank you for reminding me. Yep.
Anything from any of our other. Ongoing. Projects or future projects or approvals?
I'd rather not comment on. I'd rather not comment on any application that's not in front of the board at this time.
So then I move that we adjourn.
That does not require a vote, so we are done.